Okay, here brothers and sisters.
Hello, brothers and sisters.
I want to share with you something from Ephesians.
Ephesians chapter 1.
Ephesians chapter 1. The church in Ephesus was the most spiritual church that Paul planted.
When you read all the letters, you find that he reveals more truths to the Ephesians than to all the others.
When we look at all of our churches, we have people of different spiritual levels. Some are very zealous and are following the Lord wholeheartedly. And others are born again, but they have not really taken the Christian life seriously. So when Paul wrote to some of the other churches, he could not teach them some things that he wrote to the Ephesians. Let me show you a verse first of all in 1 Corinthians chapter 2. There Paul says to the Corinthian Christians. Verse, chapter 3, verse 1. I could not speak to you as to spiritual people. But to as babes in Christ. Now, these were people who had heard Paul for one and a half years, Paul stayed there. Can you imagine if the apostle Paul was in your church preaching every Sunday for one and a half years? No, if he was in your church and was preaching like that for one and a half years. Can you imagine that the end of that school, if we people are babies, that means they are not taking God's word seriously. And here he says, there is still verse 3, so much jealousy and strife among you. And so, he says in chapter 2, verse 6. We do not speak wisdom among those, we speak wisdom among those who are mature. But when we come to you, we cannot speak all that. Verse 2, I can only teach you about Jesus Christ dying on the cross. So there are some Christians, all that they know is Jesus died for me on the cross, my sins are forgiven and I am going to heaven. Such people are babes in Christ. They only think of their sins being forgiven and going to heaven, that's all. So we need to assess ourselves, that if we are like that, then we are babes. If that is our mindset, my sins are forgiven, I'm going to heaven. That's the main thing in my Christian life, that I am a baby. And we can have said, we were born again 25 years ago. But we are still babes, because this is the only thing we are thinking about. And then, the Holy Spirit cannot teach us his wisdom. But when it comes to Ephesians, Paul writes so many things which he cannot tell the Corinthians. So when we speak in our churches, we have to preach what is for babes and we also got to preach for those who are mature in Christ. But if some people continue to remain as babes, we can't keep on pampering them and preaching only to them. Because God expects us to grow in grace. So let's turn to Ephesians. Ephesians is a letter which has got two parts. And the first three chapters are only about what God has done for us. So if you read Ephesians 1 to 3, there's not a single thing he tells us to do. But when it comes to chapter 4, 5 and 6. He begins chapter 4 with, therefore, I'm telling you something. Therefore means because of what I've shared with you in chapters 1 to 3. Then chapter 4, 5 and 6, he is telling us the whole those three chapters that we are to do. So what we, there's something important we can learn from that. I believe that many of you brothers and sisters are really sincere and wanting to live a Christian life. Most of you are like that. You are really seeking to live godly lives in your family. Seeking to be upright and financial matters. And seeking to fellowship with your brothers and sisters. But you find yourself in a struggle where you are constantly defeated. Even though you are quite sincere. So then you may wonder, why is it like that in my life? The reason may be that we are not, we are not established first of all in what God has done for us. We are always thinking about what we have to do. And sometimes, a lot of the sermons preached in our churches by the elders may be what we have to do. So if there is not a balance in the preaching in your church. Balance means on one side, knowing what God has done for us. And then, what we have to do for God. If we are only one side, we are listening to what we have to do, what we have to do, what we have to do, it's like trying to walk on one leg. Very difficult to walk on one leg. That's why we fall so often. God has given us two legs so that we can be balanced. And in the Christian life, that means first of all to understand what God has done for us. That's not something we hear and forget, we must remember it every day of our life. The other leg is what we have to do in response to God. Then our Christian life is stable. And the other thing is, both legs must be equal in length if we want to walk stably. So we must fully understand what God has done for us and fully understand what we have to do for God. And when we go through Ephesians chapters 1 to 3. You may discover that you are not really established in what God has done for us. When you go to chapter 4, 5 and 6. It says there, for example, in chapter 4, verse 25, don't tell lies. Don't get angry, verse 26. That verse 31, let all bitterness and wrath and anger be put away from you. And chapter 5, verse 3, all immorality and impurity and greed must be put away. And then about family life, chapter 5, 22, wives be subject to your husbands. And husbands love your wives like Christ loved the church, verse 25. And resist the devil, chapter 6, verse 10 to 15. So all these things we hear many times. And we are sincere in wanting to obey them. But somehow, we don't keep them. Even though we are sincere. The inner strength we can get if we are sure of what God has done for us in Christ. We often say, speak in CFC churches about the difference between old covenant and new covenant. There are many, many differences. They were under law, we are under grace. What does that mean? Under law, man is always trying and trying and trying to please God. In the entire Old Testament period, there's no word about what God does inside of man. Nothing. The entire Old Testament is what God did outside for his life. He did those miracles in Egypt for them. Delivered them from the Egyptian slavery. Took care of them in the wilderness. And even in Canaan, he helped them to overcome the giants. And gave them land and blessed them in so many ways, in earthly ways. But nothing of what he did inside their hearts. We can say, under the law, they lived an external life. That's why their lives were up and down and up and down and up and down all the time. Even some of the greatest men in the Old Testament. You take a man like Moses. Yeah, he did so many wonderful things for God. But he could not enter the land of Canaan. Because at the height of his maturity, when he was 120 years old. Even though he had been with God for 40 years. From the age of 80 to 120, he was with God. But yet, and he preached so many things that God told him. But yet, in the last minute, he disobeyed God and he could not enter Canaan. They start out so well and then they fall. Or you think of another great person in the Old Testament, David. Oh, well, he started. Many of those psalms he wrote when he was a young man, 28, 29 years old. And he killed Goliath. But towards the end of his life, he fell into adultery and drifted away. And just before he died, one of the last things he did was this. It was not something good. He told his son Solomon that he must kill one of his enemies. He says, because that man Shimiay cursed me some years ago. I have not forgiven him, you must kill him. And that was the last thing he said before he died. This is the man David, who was called a man after God's own heart. He couldn't forgive somebody who cursed him. He started so well, and then they fell down. You take Elijah. Great man. Fire down from heaven. There was famine, he prayed and rain came. But towards the end of his life. He says, Lord, I don't want to live anymore, please take away my life, I want to leave. That's because a wicked queen threatened him. This great prophet was afraid of a woman. So afraid that he said, God, take away my life. So you see these men, they went to great heights and then they came down. Or you take John the Baptist. Jesus said, among all the human beings born from the time of Adam, John the Baptist was the greatest. But towards the end of his life. He was in prison. And he was wondering why Jesus didn't deliver him from prison. And he sends a message to Jesus saying. Are you really the Messiah or do we have to wait for the Messiah to come? He was the one who baptized Jesus and saw the Holy Spirit coming on him. Heard the voice from heaven. But then they went down. You never see that happening to Paul. Paul had a lot of failures before he was converted. Even killed Christians. But once he became a spirit-filled believer. He just went up and up and up spiritually. Till the end. He said, I've finished my course with great joy. Same way with Peter. Same way with Stephen. So all the great men of God in the New Testament never fell like these great men in the Old Testament. But that's not because Moses and David and Elijah were all half-hearted people. They never had an inner experience of the Holy Spirit. They only saw God working on the outside. All that prayers were related to something on the outside. Now you find two types of believers like that in our churches also. Yeah, even some of you may be like this. That all your prayers are related to something on the outside. Lord, give me a good job. Give me enough money. Please take care of my children. Let me get a good education for them. Help them also to, let me get them married happily. Help them also to get a good job. There's nothing wrong in these prayers. Jesus taught us to pray, give us this day our daily food. If I have to get daily food, then I have to have a job. And I have to have a house to live in. And for the next generation to do that, I must get married and have children also. So all these things, these earthly things, it's good to pray for them. But when that becomes central in our prayer and our desire. Then we become like the Old Testament people. And then you will find that some of you who were very zealous when you first joined CFC are not so zealous today. You examine yourself. When you first came to CFC, you decided no more filthy movies or watching any dirty pictures. Or dirty movies. But now, some of you have started watching some of those dirty things. Maybe others in your church don't know it. But you are a backslider. Like Demas, you have loved something in this world and gone down. Yeah, you got to examine yourself. And it's possible that in your entire life, you never came into a new covenant experience. No, I'm not saying that, that is how we should be, that's not God's will for us. For many years in my earlier part of my Christian life, I was also like that. I wanted inward reality. I even gave up my job to serve the Lord. But I was still defeated by sin. I was active on the outside but inwardly defeated. I can say I was an Old Testament, Old Covenant Christian. Until God showed me what he had done for me. And how he wanted his Holy Spirit to come and fill me inwardly. That is what changed my life, not some new teacher. So I want you to understand what God has done for you in Christ. If you have sincerely turned from your sins. And you have sincerely trusted that Jesus died for all your sins. And you believe that he's risen from the dead. And you have asked Jesus to come into your heart. Then the Holy Spirit has come into your heart. Now you may take time to be filled with the Spirit, but he's already come in. To be filled with the Spirit means where the Holy Spirit controls every part of your life. Many people have received Christ, received the Holy Spirit, but they treat him like a guest in the house. See, if some guest comes to your house, he cannot control everything in your house. You may honor him, respect him, give him good food and a good place to sleep and everything. But a guest cannot come and tell you how you should spend your money. A guest cannot come and tell you how you should speak. No, many people receive Christ like that. Yeah, he is with them in their house, in their heart. But they don't want him to tell them how they should spend their money. Or how they should speak. Because they say, we don't have all that control. He want to be more free. But you're not more free, you're actually becoming a slave to sin. Those who don't become slaves of Jesus Christ will be slaves of sin. So, in Ephesians, the first thing Paul says is. This is not true for everybody who calls himself a Christian. Those who have received Christ. The Holy Spirit says. Do you know that that happened because Ephesians 1:4, God chose you in Christ before he created the world? This is one of the great truths that has changed my life. So many things happen in the world that can cause problems for us. But then I go back to this great truth. Before God created the heaven and earth. Before Genesis 1, chapter 1, verse 1. Where he created the heaven and earth. Before that. This has been happening sometimes recently in our Zoom meetings. It's just a test of whether we get upset or irritated. We overcome it. If we have a little pause in the meeting, it gives us time to think about what we heard. So, I was saying that God chose us in Christ before creating the world. And that's a wonderful truth that we must always remember. I don't know whether you bring that to your mind frequently. Ephesians one four, before the world was created, he chose me in Christ. Think of that. Before your grandfather, anybody was born, before Adam was created. God knew your name. God knew that you would be born at this particular time. And God, God looked into the future and he knew that one day you would receive Christ. And he's the one who helped you to accept Christ. And because he knew that, he chose you before the world was created. Some of you may be hearing this for the first time. I want you to meditate on Ephesians one four. It will bring tremendous security in your life once you understand it. It will deliver you from a lot of anxiety and fear. When you realize that God chose me in Christ before he created this whole universe. So, that means my name, your name, was in the mind of God before he created the world. So, once you know that, you realize that you're a very important person in God's eyes. Because the devil is always trying to tell some people, you're unimportant, you're useless. You made so many mistakes and you are still falling into so many sins. No, God does not approve of those sins. But it doesn't change the fact that he chose you before the world was created. And the purpose with which he chose you is written in verse four. That you will be holy and without any blame in his presence. That is his calling for you. And in order to fulfill that. It says in Ephesians one three. These are two of the most important verses for us to understand. Verse three and four. In verse three, it says, every single blessing of the Holy Spirit, he has already blessed you with in heavenly places in Christ. Now whether you claim them or not is up to you. Use an example. If somebody has put crores of rupees in your bank account. See, one lakh is hundred thousand rupees. And one crore is one hundred lakhs. Imagine there's so much money in your bank account. You will never have any financial need. Because anytime you want, you go to the bank, take out the money. Spiritually, that is how God has blessed us. It says, every blessing of the Holy Spirit. You've already given it. If you don't get it, it's because you don't go there and take it. If you don't go to the bank and take out the money, you will not get it. If you don't go to the bank of heaven. And say, Lord, this blessing in Christ is mine, I want it. If you don't ask, you don't get it. You have to go to the bank, give a cheque and take out the money. That's a picture. The, but Jesus said, ask and you will receive. And he said, you don't have because you don't ask. See James. In James and chapter four. There's a very interesting statement here. Last part of verse two. You do not have because you do not ask. Why has that other brother become more spiritual than you? He went to the bank of heaven and took everything that he had in Christ. He became a spiritual person. You did not go like that to God and ask. So you did not get. No, it says these blessings are spiritual. It does not say, God has blessed us with all material blessings. That was in the Old Testament, he blessed Israel. They had zero spiritual blessing. But all earthly blessings. And the person whose mind is always on earthly blessing is an Old Testament Israelite, not a Christian. So, in the New Testament, God doesn't say he won't provide our earthly needs. He says, if you seek spiritual blessings. Then whatever is required for your earthly needs, I'll give you. All these two thousand years. Every Christian who has wholeheartedly sought God. Who sought God's righteousness and his kingdom. God has always provided their earthly needs. He doesn't give them much more than other earthly people. The richest people in the world are not Christians. No, they are worldly people. But Christians who seek God wholeheartedly, they get enough for their earthly needs. Oh, you don't have because you don't ask. And then, James four three, it says. If you ask and you don't get, because you are asking with wrong motives. For example, if you pray, Lord, anoint me with the Holy Spirit and give me a powerful ability to preach God's word. That is a good prayer to pray if you want to glorify God. But if you are praying that prayer so that you can become a great preacher in the church. That's how some people are praying. That's what James says, you are asking with wrong motives. That's another reason people don't get. Let's turn back to Ephesians one three. We need to understand these two verses very clearly. God has blessed us with every single blessing of the Holy Spirit in Christ. Those are verse three, heavenly blessings it says, and not earthly blessings. And spiritual blessings and not material blessings. So let's remember this clearly. You can have every blessing of the Holy Spirit. And that will make you, chapter one, verse four, holy and blameless in God's eyes. It's not holy and blameless before men. It says, you are holy and blameless before God. God looked at my heart and says, you are holy and blameless before me. Not a single person in the Old Testament could live this life. But here it says, God has chosen us that we should be holy and blameless before him. And that is why he has blessed us in verse three with every blessing of the Holy Spirit. Now this is not something we can understand in our mind. See, now that I've spoken to you, you can say, yeah, I understood it now. But Paul writes further in verse eighteen, Ephesians one eighteen. He says that you got, I pray that your heart will get light on this. That your heart will understand what riches he has for you. How do I know whether I understood this in my mind or in my heart? When I know something in my mind, it usually makes me proud. I think I can explain it to other people. That is no use. God's truth must come to our mind, but it must not stop there. From there, it must go to my heart. It's like when we take food and put it into the mouth, it mustn't stop in the mouth. If you keep on stuffing your mouth with food, you're not going to be strong. The mouth is only a channel through which the food must go to the stomach. Then only you become strong. Same way, the truth of God is like food. Now as I am speaking, you understand it in your mind. Paul says, I am praying that this will come into your heart. Then it will become true in your life. Because every good thing and every bad thing comes from the heart. Evil thoughts don't come from the mind, they come from the heart, through the mind and out. Anger, anger is in the heart and comes into my mind and through my tongue. The same way, spiritual things. See, we can act good towards other people. But real goodness comes from the heart and through my mind, I become good to other people. Otherwise, our Christianity is only imitation. Acting like something else. You know, Jesus spoke against one great sin. In Matthew twenty three. He frequently called the Pharisees hypocrites. See, Matthew twenty three. Verse thirteen. Who want you, Pharisees hypocrites? Verse fifteen. Verse twenty three, who want you, strident Pharisees hypocrites? Again, verse twenty five, you hypocrites. And verse twenty seven. And verse twenty nine. He spoke against hypocrisy more than he spoke against adultery. You, you may say you don't commit adultery. But Jesus spoke about being a hypocrite. A hypocrite is, the meaning in the original is an actor. So what he is telling the Pharisees is, you are acting spiritual. That is what you don't telling them, you actors, you actors, you actors, you actors. See, these people who produce cinemas, sometimes produce cinemas of Jesus Christ. They have produced cinemas of Moses. Some drunkard of an actor, in the cinema, he will act like Jesus or act like Moses. In here, in real life, he may have divorced two, three wives. And he may be a drunkard. And doing so many immoral things. And only, and only living for money. When he is acting in this movie. He may be acting like John the Baptist. Or like Moses. A holy man of God. And once the filming of, is over, then he goes back to his drunkenness and his immoral life. That is the meaning of actor, hypocrite. There are many Christians like that. They act holy and good before other people. My dear brothers and sisters, you must hate that like you hate murder, like you hate adultery. Don't glory that you don't commit murder and adultery. If you are a hypocrite. It's as bad as committing murder or adultery.
विवचारम से वधिपोलवे अदेपुला तान मोसमान पावमा इर्करद
We need to see the seriousness of being a hypocrite.
ओरु मायमालकारनाय इरुपदनुड़िया कोडिय तन्मी निङल पार्केवेंटु
And the only way we can avoid that is if you say, "Lord, I want to watch my heart all the time."
अद तविर्कु ओरय वडी आणडवरेन्नु उल्लत एल्ला नैर्वले एन्नु नान गवनिक उर्मुकरे
See Proverbs, let me show you a verse in Proverbs.
नीरीमुडिले ओरु वसंद उल्लुक्कान्बिकरे
Proverbs, chapter four and verse twenty-three.
नीरीमुडिले नान गिर
Twenty-three.
नान इरोत्तीमुन
"Watch your heart with all diligence, for all the springs of light flow from there."
एल्ला कावलोड़म निरुध्दी काट्कुल अदन नर्द्दन्द जीव उठ्रपरपुड़
Don't be satisfied that other people think you're spiritual.
मट्रा मकलक्कुले आविकुरल एन्नु निन्गर दिर्ती पट्टवेंटु
Especially if you're an elder in a church, you have a great lust to appear spiritual before people.
कुरिपागे निङल ओरु सभी मुप्रा इर्करिल्ले एन्नु सोल्ग जनलकुन्बाग नान उन्त आविकुरन्नु पोल अभिकेवेंट ओरु विपदा मेहर पड़कर
I've seen this in some Pentecostal pastors.
सल्ला बेतकस्ते पास्टर अदले इदेह पार्त्रिकरे
They want to appear very spiritual.
अवरु निन्त आविकुरल पो उन्नु ओरु काच्चलिक उर्मुकर
And they have to shout and raise their hands when they preach.
अवर प्रसंक्युमुड़द सत्तमुड़ कायले तुर्क्यल्ला प्रसंक्य एन्नु इत्यकर
And say, "Hallelujah" a few times.
सल्ला समय अल्लेलियान सत्तमुड़ वार
And then they put a tremor in their voice.
अदरक वायले ओरु बेसुमुड़द सत्तत्त सत्तम अप्पडिया अदरु
They won't say, "Oh God," they say, "Oh God."
ओ देवने एन्नु सोल्लमार्ल देवने एन्नु सोल्व
See, that is all acting.
दल्लाम ओरु निडिपुतान
That is worse than murder.
अद कोलेक से वधिक पाग से वधिक पावत्तीकाट्टुल मोसमान
I think CFC is the only church that preaches that, that acting is bad.
मायमालत्ते कुरित्युम कडमियाय प्रसंक्य कण्टिपाय प्रसंक्य कुड़िया सभी CFC सभी तान एन्नु निन्गरे
I hope all of you will be delivered from hypocrisy.
इन्तस मायमालत्तर्ने निङल लार्मे उदलियाक पटिकरल्ले नान नम्बुकर
I tell you, it is not easy to get rid of it.
इदर नर्द्द विलिया वर्वद अम्ल एलिदल्ले एन्नु सोल्ग
We must really seek to live before the face of God.
निङल उन्मयाले मे देवनुड़ी अपोल्य वर्वमा अवान कट्टुकुला वेंटु
And pray that our life comes from our heart.
नम्मले जीवन आणदी उम्मले इरुध्दिर्क्कन वरवेंटमन्ड नान जबिकिरे
Ephesians one eighteen.
एबेसियर ओन्नर पदन्नाट्य
Paul says, "I pray that the eyes of your heart will get light."
उम्मले इरुध्यम आणदी प्रकाशमा इर्कवेंटमन्ड नान जबिकिरे एन्नु सोल्ग
Not that your mind will understand what I'm saying.
नान सोल्गर्द उम्मले मणिले विलंगिकुल्ले एन्नु अल्ले
But your heart will be gripped by the tremendous riches of God's glory that He has for you.
देवन उम्मलकेन्ट्रा वैच्छिरक्कुड़िया मकिमीन आइसुरियम इन्नद एन्नु निङल अर्न्दु उल्लतक्कदा उम्मले उल्लत्यले प्रकाशमुड़ा एक्कवेंटमन्ड जबिकिरे एन्नु सोल्ग
And he prays that your heart will understand verse nineteen, what a fantastic power He wants to give you.
अवर उम्मलक्कु कोडुके कुड़िया तान मगामेन्मी मगतुमान वल्लमी निन उल्लत्यले अर्न्दु वेंटमन्ड उर्मुकर
Verse nineteen.
पत्तमुन रामसम
I told you, this is all what God has done for us, He's not asking you to do anything.
निङल एथा उन्दे से यवेंटमन्ड एन्नु नान इप्पर्द सोल्गर्द दल्लाम देवनमकन्ने से इर्कर एन्नु कुर्ति सोल्ग
God has chosen you.
देवन उम्मले चेन्दर्ति रिकर
Before the world was created.
इन्तेवल्ला उन्डावु उदरक्क उन्डावु
And your eyes need to be enlightened to see what He has done for you.
अवर उम्मलक्कन्ने से इर्कर रिकर इन्मधे पार्कुमुडियाकुम उम्मले मणिकल लाहुन्द प्रकाशिक्क पट्टवेंटु
You see, chapter two.
इरण्डा मधिगार
While we were dead, well, chapter two, verse five and six, God made us alive and raised us in Christ.
इरण्डा मधिगारम आयुंद आर्वसले वासिक्रम अक्रमले ले मरित्रलाहुन्द नम्मले कृष्टुरने कुड़े वीर्पित
You say, "You accepted Christ."
निङल येसु कृष्ट वेट्ट कुन्डिर
You say, "You were born again."
निङल मणिले इर्किल्ले निसोल्ग
Say, "God made," remember that it is God who made you alive in Christ.
देवन तान कृष्टुक्राकुम उल्ले वीर्पित आणदी न्यापतिले वैज्ञानिक
And He's lifted you up spiritually into the heavenlies in your spirit.
अवर उन्नद अल्ले ओरुमुड़ कुड़माय वीर्तिकर
These are some of the amazing things that He says in chapters one, two and three.
ओन्डी इरण्डमुन्र अधिकारुले इप्पडिपट्टा वियक्कत्त कार्यगो देवनमक से इर्कर कार्यगो निसोल्ग
And then, in chapter three, verse, He says, "I pray for you."
मुन्रम अधिकारत्यले नान उम्मलक्काहुन्द जबिकिरे एन्नु सोल्ग
Chapter three, verse sixteen.
मुन्रम अधिकार पनारम सलम
That He will give you the power of this Holy Spirit in the inner man.
अवरु आवीनाले उल्लान अन्न पनुष्ले अल्लमय बलपड़ुमुडियान नान जबिकिरे एन्नु सोल्ग
And after having said all this, He says in verse Chapter three, verse twenty.
मुन्रम अधिकार इरुदाम सलम
He can do much more than all these things that I have said for you.
नान मिंडिकुल्ले कुम निन्हे कार्यगो इप्पर्द नान सोल्ग अकार्यगो लाम मिग्गम अधिमाय अवसे अल्ला वरेन्नु सोल्ग
I want to encourage all of you to read Ephesians chapters one, two and three.
उम्मलार्मे एबेसियर ओन्नर इरण्डमुन्र अधिकारुले वासिकिकुमुडियाकु जापड़
And don't read it as something God is telling you to do.
देवन निङल एथो उम्मले से यवेंटमन्ड सोन्दा काहे देवासिक वेंटु
Read all those chapters thinking of what God has done for you.
देवन उम्मलकेन्ट्रा एन्नु से इर्कर अर्नु अधिकारुले वासिंग
It's a very blessed passage of scripture to read.
वेदत्तले वासिकपदर्कुम बाक्यमान सल्ला अधिकार
Meditate on it and say, "Lord, open my eyes to see what you have done for me."
इदेह ध्यान निङल आणडवरे यनक्कन्ने निन्न से इर्कर इन्मधे आणडवरे नान अदरक उल्लक्कुर्वेच्छेवेंट
And then, from that, you'll be able to live the type of life that the New Testament speaks about.
इदेह पुत्ती एयरपोर्ट बेसकुड़िया तान अंदा वाण्यक्य इदरुलमागा निङल वाड़मुडियम
This is a subject, it's very difficult for me to speak about.
इदेह कुर्ति बेसुद्देख अन्न करिनमान ओरु ओरु कर्ता ओरु पाड़
It's such a big thing, I pray that the Holy Spirit will open your eyes to see it.
इदेह कान्मुडियाक परसुत्त आवियन उम्मले कंगली तरक्कुमुडियाक नान जबिकिरे नदलुक इदेह करिनमान ओरु पाड़
I'll give you my testimony, what this has done for me.
देवन एक एन्नु से इर्कर अर्नु नान साची सोल्ग
I'm not always struggling to please God.
इप्पर्द मेन देवनी प्रियपुडित्यमन्ड प्रियपुडित्यमन्ड नान पोराड़
I'm not in such a tension.
नान अप्पडिपट्टा मण अर्जुत्तले इर्कर अल्ले
I sit back and say, "Lord, what a wonderful Father you are, you have done so much for me."
अण्डवरे निन एवलो अर्प्तमान तगपन निन यनक्कन्ने एवलो वैच्छिरक्किर
I just want to be open to you to understand what you've done for me.
अण्डवरे निन यनक्कन्ने से इर्कर कार्यगो विलंगिकुल्ले एन्नु अंडे तरक्कुपड़
And to be open to receive all that you have for me in Christ.
अण्डवरे कृष्टुकुलाय निन यनक्कन्ने वैच्छिरक्कुड़े सगला आश्रोतंग नान पट्टकुल्ले एन्नु जरंदु कुड़िया
The more I receive in my heart, the more I can give to others.
एन्दलुक अधिमाय उल्लत्रे नान पट्टकुल्ले नान अदलुक अधिमाय मट्रोलिकन नान कुडुक्कुमुडियम अण्डवरे
The more I receive in my heart, the more I can overcome sin in my life.
एन्दलुक अधिमाय नान पट्टकुल्ले नान अदलुक अधिमाय पावत्ती नान विर्कुल्ले एन्नु अधिमाय
This is one of the main differences between Old Covenant and New Covenant.
पर्य उड़म रिक्की कम पुत्त उड़म रिक्की एकमुल्ला मिग्ग पर्य वित्यासम वित्यासम इन्ने ओन्नर
The Old Testament, God said, "Do this, do this, don't do this, don't do this."
पर्य एयरपोर्टले देवन इदेह से इदेह से इदेह सीआदे सीआदे एन्नु सोल्ग
But He never told them how to do it.
अनल इदेह एप्पडिया से यवेंटमन्ड अण्डवरे सोल्ग
He never gave them the power.
अंदरपुर्य वल्लमी उन्दु कुडुक्कुल
It's like you send your son to the market to buy something and you don't give him any money.
निङल ओरु पायने संदेख अनपुरि रिल फळम कुडुक्कमला अन्न पीर
What can he get?
अप्पर्द अन्न एन्ना वागमुडियम
That's how Old Testament people were.
इप्पर्द तान पर्य एयरपोर्ट तमकल इन्दार
I want to say that many of you are defeated by sin because you have not understood this.
निङल इदेह विलंगिकुल्ला अप्पडिनल्ले उम्मले अनेकर पावत्तीले चोर किडिकपट्टुकुन्डे इर्कर
You're not supposed to struggle, struggle, struggle to overcome sin.
पावत्ती मेर्कुल्ले इर्कर निङल पोराड़ी 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 कुन्डे इर्कर एन्नु निम्म चेवील
You have to first begin with, "Lord, fill me with your Holy Spirit."
उदलाव इप्पडियार्मी नान अण्डवरे ने आवीनाले नरप्प
Help me to know that you chose me before the world was created.
नुल्ला उन्डावु उन्डावु तान जरंदु वेंटमन्ड अर्न्दु वेंटु विलंगिकुल्ले तिरुवेच्छी
Help me to know what all riches I have in Christ.
अण्डवरे कृष्टुकुलाहुन्द इन्नल्ला आश्रोतंग वैच्छिरक्कुम आइसुरित्य अवर्तिले वैच्छिरक्कुम अर्न्दु
Open the eyes of my heart to see it.
अण्डवरे इदेह पार्कुमुडियाक नान मलक्कन्ने चरंदुल्लम अण्डवरे
I want to open my heart to receive it.
अण्डवरे अदि पट्टकुल्ले एन्डियाक नान इरुध्दी नान तरक्कर
The Spirit of God will come and fill my inner being.
अप्पुर्द इन्नु उल्लान अकार्यगो लाम देव आवियन उद्द नरप्प
And from there, the life of Christ will come out.
अंगिर्न्द खृष्टुरुड़ी जीवन विलिपुड़
There, God will fill my heart with joy.
अंग्ये देवन एन्नु अवरे संतोषित्रन नरप्प
He will make me holy inside.
अवर उल्ले एन्नु परसुत्तमाकु
Then my holiness will be seen on the outside.
अप्पुर्द इन्नु अन्न परसुत्त विलिया विलिपुड़
Many of you are trying to be holy on the outside first.
उदलाव अनेकर उदलाव तान विलिया विलिया नान परसुत्तमाय कानपड़ुमुड़ एन्नु उर्मुकर
God, God to make you holy on the inside.